Call the meeting door.
Pledge the flag of the United States of America and introduce your public where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome you all to a regular meeting of Umatilla County Board of Commissioners. This meeting is open to the public through communication devices that we have in place and records being kept. The first thing we're going to do is begin with awards and recognition. I have one for the Umatilla County Excellence Award. The name of the recipient is Monica Bashir.
She's surprised.
I have no idea what Rachel told her to get.
I like what she did.
I will read through the nomination form. This is for July, August, September 21, Employee of the Quarter Excellence Award. Umatilla County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who serve the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. In that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination letter from your peers that warranted this recognition and extend their congratulations. Monica is always striving to be the best in her job. She is courteous and professional to customers on the phone and in person. She is always looking to improve the process to make the assessment and taxation office run more efficient. Her recent project is tracking down current addresses for delinquent taxpayers. To achieve this goal, she turned to elections for collaboration. She has re-mailed multiple tax statements and delinquent letters to new addresses and has been collecting on back taxes. Her personal variance is validated by the drop in delinquent accounts. We have the least amount of accounts of delinquency in the last 10-plus years. This is just one project she took the reins to solve. She has taken this lead on several others. Monica always has a positive attitude at work and brings ideas for improvement to the table. I believe Monica is a great role model of Umatilla County employees. And as Employee of the Quarter, Monica will be awarded eight hours of paid time off, assuming approval from the supervisor. And we congratulate you for being recognized for this honor. This time, I would like to ask her supervisor and Monica to come forward for a pick. Everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there still a parking spot?
Yeah, don't have a parking spot.
Oh, you can get the.
Yeah, she should have a slip. Sorry, the PTO slip.
Oh, I didn't give her that.
Both of these, she can have both. This is kind of important.
I was busy trying to smile for a minute.
Good dog.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Any additions to the agenda?
I thought you had plenty. I didn't.
Thank you.
For you. Approved minutes. Can we skip that one?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yes, we have minutes from September 8th and September 22nd.
And make a motion to approve the minutes from September 8th and September 22nd.
Second motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Now then, yes, we do have 19 items on the agenda that will probably suffice for the day. The first to read belong to Public Works.
Did you, sorry, did you want to, I'm not sure if Roy is online or.
Is Roy?
I couldn't find him.
Unless he's calling in.
Let me see here real quick.
Anyway, if he's not online, we can wait and see if he comes in. But he wanted to introduce his new deputy.
Don't see him online, huh?
Maybe he'll.
Unless he's on the phone.
Okay, well.
All right, if he comes in, we'll let him. All right, there is no one here, but there might be, I don't see any strangers online, but is there any public input regarding issues that are not on the agenda? All right, Tom, Rock, you.
Morning Commissioners, Tom Bellows, Public Works Director. The first item we have before the board is for the purchase of a new John Deere road grader. This is part of our continuing process to keep our grader fleet up as new as possible. This machine comes with a $200,000 guaranteed buyback if we roll it over within or short of five years, 5,000 hours. The purchase price on Sourcewell for this machine as equipped would be $349,874.28.
I'd move for authorization to purchase this John Deere 672 GP at the price of $349,874.28.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Roy is on there.
Yeah, Roy is on there.
Okay, we'll finish with Tom. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, the, I believe if I, at least on my list, the second item would be the purchase of a stacker conveyor. Back in May, we actually rented this stacker. We wanted to see if it was going to suit our needs, both for the length of the conveyor and the way it operated with our crusher. It actually exceeded our expectations. Our stockpiling has become much more efficient. We're getting a lot less foreign material because we don't use the loader to stockpile anymore. And it's actually working out very well for us. We would like to roll this conveyor over. We have $16,000 invested in it on rent. Modern machinery will give us the full $16,000 against the purchase price, which leaves us with a balance of $35,680 to go ahead and purchase this. And that's what we're currently requesting is that we go ahead, that the board approve purchase of this stacker conveyor for the, our crusher.
I'd move to authorize the purchase of the buyout of the rental contract on the stacker conveyor for modern machinery in the amount of $35,680.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Third item is guardrail supplies.
Yep, the, this is a stock item, what we try to keep on hand. This, the last two years, we have had guardrail damage on bridges and elsewhere that has reduced our stockpile. And so our foreman supervisor that does all that guardrail work put together a list of materials, went out for quotes. Corel sales came in with the low quote at $8,795.00 for the list of guardrail components, beams and posts. And we're just requesting approval to purchase that.
I would move for approval of the guardrails supplies from Corel Sales in the amount of $8,795.
Second.
I have a quick question, Tom. Are these supplies, I forgot to ask you yesterday, are these in stock?
My understanding, you mean, has Corel got them in stock in their yard? My understanding is they do have them in stock. We're not having to wait on the order. But as you can see, this quote was put together on 8/30, so some of that stuff may not be as available as it was then.
Okay, I was, yeah, the beams were kind of what I was curious about, but thanks.
I believe, I believe they have a pretty good supply of beams. Normally, they keep that stuff on hand.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I see Court Administrator Roy is appears to be on now to make an introduction of Irma Solis, the new Deputy Trial Court Administrator. Roy, are you there?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I would like you folks to meet my new Deputy Trial Court Administrator, Irma Solis. She's on camera. We submitted for your information a brief bio on her last week. What I wanted you to know is that she comes to us from the Marisol Clinic in Hermiston, and she is very invested in our community, particularly in the Hermiston area, which we appreciate. She adds a dimension to my management team with her experience in personnel management and human relations that we are looking forward to, as well as the capacity she adds to us and the ability to reach out to our communities. So I wanted you to meet her. I'd like you to be able to ask her questions if you wish, and thank you for giving us the time, Commissioners.
Before we reference questions, I would point out that she's a Hermiston High School graduate with a bachelor's degree in business administration from Eastern Oregon University and currently lives in Hermiston with her husband and three children, two daughters and a son. So, would you welcome her? Is there a question?
Congratulations, Irma. Are you going to spend the majority of your time at St. Patrick's Hill then, or split the, split between the two locations?
So our plan is to split my time as evenly as possible between Hermiston and Pendleton, and then also spend some time in Hepner.
Gotcha, gotcha. Welcome aboard, Irma. Congratulations.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Welcome. I have any questions? The introduction was fantastic. I appreciated the bio, by the way, and welcome. And our doors are always open. If you have anything, you know, feel free to come see us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anything you would like to add?
No, I just look forward to working alongside Roy and working alongside all of our community to just accomplish great things.
Good, well, we're happy that you're onboarded and particularly happy that you actually come to us from the county, so you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item four is Sheriff's Office interim position.
Good morning Commissioners, Captain Dave Williamson with Umatilla County Sheriff's Office here. This is a request to move one of our senior deputy twos into a acting sergeant position. At this time, we have, one of our sergeants is off on administrative leave for the foreseeable future while both an internal and a criminal investigation are conducted. This greatly hampers our operational ability. It's nearly impossible to operate with only three sergeants, so we're asking you to move Eric Palmer into the position of acting sergeant from the position of senior deputy two until such a time as this matter can be resolved.
I'd move for approval to place a senior deputy from the Criminal Patrol Division into a temporary out-of-class position as a patrol sergeant.
I'd second that, and good choice, by the way.
Other questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, I think the next two items are yours.
Yes, I'm seeking approval for the new equipment that's coming in for our vesta machines. The state Oregon Emergency Management will cover five, and as you know, due to an Erling, I guess you call it a formula, they've determined that we didn't need the sixth position, which we don't agree with, of course, so we're obligated to pay for that. The cost that I'm looking for is $33,058.74. The purchase is utilizing the HGAC contract with Lumen as well. And then there will be an ongoing warranty for the next five years.
Has there been any discussion on this since Umatilla County, it seems to be the poster child for COVID in Oregon? Is there anything that they could kick in? Because I agree with you 100%. We absolutely need that sixth station. It's imperative for our employees, especially in the emergency times.
There really hasn't been too much. I feel like we're pretty fortunate. I know that some of the bigger agencies lost almost 15 stations, and they're having to determine different funding to man those as well because they need them.
Is there an appeal process, Karen?
You can try to do a appeal, I guess is what you're going to equivalate it to, but everything that I've seen and everything that we're doing, we wouldn't qualify for that exception.
Sheriff, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the dispatch CPE from Lumen in the amount of $33,058.74.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that comes some pretty cool features. Our text to 911 will be integrated into our phones, and we'll also be implementing Rapid SOH, which gives us multiple different agencies that feed information real time, and the dispatcher will be able to actually pinpoint where their person's calling from.
All right, on to a dispatch payable.
I'm not sure what that is.
RIMS, the RIMS maintenance contract.
It's the yearly maintenance fees for everybody, and they bill out the two that we, finances bill out, the two that gets reimbursed to us, but that is the yearly ongoing maintenance and warranty fees and 24/7 service from them.
Karen, is that already, is maintenance just ongoing, or do they come in and do a quarterly or monthly or yearly checkup on everything?
It's as needed, so they're on call 24/7. We do have a fax capability. We also have after-hours numbers, but they do not come in and check periodically the equipment or anything. We depend a lot on IT to make sure that that's running smoothly.
Thank you. I'd move for approval of payment to Sun Ridge Systems in the amount of $82,261 for the annual maintenance on the RIMS system.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, seven, is a door control replacement contract. Riley, is that you?
Yeah, Riley from the IT department. I've been working on this. Out at the jail, we tried to replace it with some older equipment, failed. The Industrial Systems put in a quote for us for $11,450 to procure a new touch panel and a new model of the equipment there. They said they were 99% sure this would work with our old system, so we're asking it to be approved so we can get this in place. It's what control, so in the jail control, did we lose?
No.
No, you're still there.
You're still there.
Okay, so in control, there's the buttons that they press to open the doors down in the jail. That's what the panels are. And one of them died. It's been two months now. We've attempted a replacement once before with older equipment. It didn't work, so we're having them try and replace it with new equipment.
After watching how this operates without this equipment, I move for the approval of the contract with Industrial Systems for jail door control touchscreen replacement in the amount of $11,450.
Do you have a second?
I'm excited.
No, I saw it, I saw it. Robert?
Just a question. Riley clarified that it works with our old system. Do we know whether it's going to transfer into our new system as well? Whether, because I know that we'll be replacing that when we do the jail remodel, so just curious whether it would be a part of that or whether it would be thrown out with the bath water.
We don't know that that'll work because we're going out for RFP. It depends on who bids the system and what system they're going to be putting in. This is more of a, you know, a safety issue because they only have, so that right now they're working off one panel, which is the same age as the other panel that failed. So it's, you know, we're guessing that we might not have that long on the second panel there. So we're wanting to get something in place so they don't go into a full lockdown, basically.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Riley, I believe you have the next item as well.
Yes, that would be, so when we went for approval for the new finance system, we talked about there was kind of a shortfall in the timekeeping software. We got, talked to a couple different places to see what they had. This one, Deschutes County, I believe is using, it's Nova Time. So we're asking that we approve a $19,770.20 contract with Nova Time to be able to use their timekeeping software, which integrates into the Casell software.
I think that's a different one we've got up.
Yeah, that's different. That's the previous item. Number eight? You want number eight?
Oh, I'm so sorry. My fault.
No, that's all right.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, this is all right. At least not ours. Quick question, Riley, and I forgot to ask this the other day, is this an annual contract or is this, we buy the software and you maintain it, or what's the, what's the status?
So the, the contract is a $7,459 of it is for the implementation, and then we pay, looks like $1,025.93 for the monthly subscription.
And that's for the user portion?
Yeah, that's for, that's for everything, for us to be able to get in and set things up and for the users to be able to log in and do their time, do the timekeeping portion of it. So it's, yeah, it's for basically everything. So it'd be $12,311.20 a year reoccurring fee.
That's the question I was asking. Thanks, Riley.
Did we get a motion?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the contract for Nova Time in the amount of $19,770.28.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Let's remind people, if you are not speaking, please mute your microphones. We're getting a lot of dexter noise. All right, Dan, Lynn, I, you have the next item.
Good morning Commissioners, Dan Lynn I, Director of Administrative Services. And before you is a quote for converting our current GIS system. So we basically have the maps that the assessment runs on and the data below the maps, all the tax law information. So that makes the GIS system, the maps, and then the connectivity to get all the assessment information basically runs on our online system. When you look at it online, if you ever go out there, that's what we're talking about, that base layer of map. It's currently maintained, over the last 20 years has been, in a software package called GeoMedia, which is no longer the industrial standard. ArcGIS is the industrial standard. No longer do they teach it in college. They're teaching everybody how to use ArcGIS. So with the, our GIS manager leaving, we no longer have a person that is skilled in maintaining that, in a sense, because we, her replacement would not have that skill. And it doesn't behoove the county to continue in that older format when we could go ahead and have it converted so that we can have a bigger pool of candidates, plus be with something that is not proprietary, as proprietary in a sense. And to do the conversion is $21,990 to convert that base layer and would benefit the assessment of taxation immensely because they're currently using ArcGIS for other things, and the planning department does too. So this would work with those people that are already trained in those offices. Hopefully that made sense.
I'd move for approval to contract with ProWAS for $21,990 to convert tax law maps to an ArcGIS format.
Second.
One quick question, Dan, are they going to do that in-house, or will they just do that away from here off of, off of an access?
So what we actually have done already before our GIS manager left, we shipped all the data down to them, they did an estimate, so they have the data, and we just updated it last week so that they have the most current records of that, and they'll convert it there. And then we will do, we'll inspect the data information and go over with them, and then they'll do some training on how to utilize it now since it's in the ArcGIS formats. There's some training involved with that too, but it's all going to be converted over there and done online, so there would be no, actually them coming here at all.
All right, thanks, Dan.
We've got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number 10 is a maintenance payable.
Morning Commissioners, Mark Tanner, Facilities Manager. The payable before you is from the capital preventative list for the Guardian Care Building, and that was for repainting the entire exterior for $5,608.
Questions or a motion?
Was that part of the, on the approved maintenance list already? Is that where that came from?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any more questions? Boiler request for proposals.
So number 11 is, was also off of the preventative list, and it's for the replacement of the boiler at Guardian Care. We struggled the last couple of years trying to get that to stay running. We were able to get it back up last year. It's really questionable whether or not we're going to be able to get it to run this year. So this is to go out for RFQ for, or RFP for the replacement of that boiler.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number 12 is courthouse air handlers.
And this was, this is for approval of the RFQ that was put out last month or two months ago, whatever it was, as one of the approved projects to start at the courthouse replacing the six air handlers that supply the basement, first and second floors.
I'd move for, to award contract for replacement of the courthouse air handlers to HMS Commercial Service in the amount of $57,425.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 13 is courthouse rooftop units contract.
Yeah, this is also part of the approved for the rooftop units, which control the entire third floor, and also courtroom, courtroom three. So, basically, any part of the Sally Court, the judges' chambers and all that. This is for $202,354.
Move for approval to award contract for replacement of the courthouse air handlers to HMS Commercial Services in the amount of $202,354.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 14 is a boiler replacement contract at Stafford Hensel Government Center.
Correct. These are also from the list of approved RFPs that went out. This is to replace the two boilers that service Stafford Hensel for the price of $149,239.
Approval. Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 15. Item number 15 is the Community Rewards Program. Joe, are you going to do that?
Yeah. Hello, Joe Fumara, Public Health Director. The Community Rewards Program is completed, and this is the, this is the program that, for nonprofit and church agencies that participated in vaccine outreach, vaccine education, and any other activity that encouraged COVID vaccinations in their community, that put them in the list for a incentive payout. Attached, you should have the list of what the payouts for the organizations within the zip, the three zip codes that did reach the 60% threshold by the deadline of September 1st that we had set. These organizations performed a variety of activities across the board, and our review board met earlier and looked over all the documentation that was submitted by these organizations, and settled on these payment amounts per zip code. The, the overall zip code amounts are heavily influenced by population within those zip codes, which explains the discrepancy between the zip code payout.
Mr. Chairman, move approval to payments participating organizations as recommended by the CRP Board.
I'd second that, and thanks, Joe, and congratulate him on a great, great program, and I think it was successful.
Yeah, we have three, three communities that exceeded, particularly pleased, that two, our two largest communities exceeded.
And they, and they started at a very low number.
Right. All right. Finance Signature Authorization. Want me to read it?
Commissioners, Robert Paul, CFO. The county requires someone to be authorized to do business with banking. I believe the last time that the Commissioners appointed individuals to do this was 2006. Same individuals are still here, myself and Marie Simonas, but we felt it was time to reappoint us for that business, as we are working on banking arrangements in an ongoing fashion.
Mr. Chairman, approval inter adopt order BCC 2021-04.
I'd second that. Now, it's Robert. How many banks do we do business with?
Currently, we're doing business with Umpqua Bank, and we're doing business with Columbia State Bank. Umpqua Bank has recently changed their business model for the city of Pendleton, and so we are working on alternatives.
Second. Thank you. Curious on that.
We get a motion?
Yep.
All right, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right. Item number 17 is a copier for the finance office.
Commissioners, again, Robert Paul, CFO. Finance offices have been limping along with that older copier for quite some time. It's become a production issue in our office. We use it continuously. We've gotten a quote for a replacement machine, and we'd ask authorization to purchase that, please.
I would move to approve purchase of copier for finance office from Canon Solutions America in the amount of $5,380.
Second.
Robert, is there any use for the old one, or is that a trade-in model, or?
So, it was a, it was a kind of a helper for the last machine we had. It was a used machine that they thought would serve our purpose. It has been less than satisfactory, but we've had it for a few years now. I, I think for someone who didn't do much volume, it might be okay, but my guess is probably you're not going to reposition it anywhere in the county.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Will it occur to Marine Patrol maybe?
I was thinking.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. The items 18 and 19 are also helping you do the business of.
Public hearing.
We're going to hearing mode for the supplemental budgets, so we'll be in hearing mode.
Staff report from the Finance Department regarding supplemental budgets that are required at this time. I'll summarize them for you. Budget Order 2022-02 for the Bicycle Path Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $100,000 and a decrease in contingency of $100,000. Budget Order 2022-03, Human Services Reserve Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $169,000 and an increase in contingency of $169,000. And Budget Order 2022-07, Inmate Welfare and the Commissary Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $123,000, an increase in local revenue of $60,000, an increase in materials and services of $145,000, and an increase in contingency of $38,000. Are there any questions? Would you like explanation?
I'm assuming the commissary one is because of the new contractor?
Partially. It's been, it's been the desire of the Finance Department to have a better handle on those, on the tracking of those funds. They're part of our audit, and yet we have, up to now, not had a lot of control over them. More recently, we have taken over the management of those funds, and so it just made sense to bring it on budget, because it was an off-budget program for a long time.
Basically, the fund was created, they're just now funding it.
Okay.
We created an on-budget program for it.
Gotcha. So, truly, it's just a transfer of the funds from the off-budget into the in-budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Robert.
You're welcome.
All right, I have a question to Robert before we go out of hearing mode. Okay? We're out of hearing mode.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of Budget Order 2022-02.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, move approval of Budget Order 2022-03 for Human Services.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, move approval for Budget Order 2022-07 on the inmate welfare commissary.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
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 Commissioners, we also have, oh, I assume we're done with that. Moving forward, we also have some transfers of appropriation to do this morning. Budget Order 2022-04, Fair Improvement, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $10,000 and a decrease of contingency of $10,000. Budget Order 2022-05, Software Reserve, the Software Reserve Program requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $250,000 and a decrease in contingency of $250,000, excuse me. And Budget Order 2022-06, Stimulus Reserve, requires a transfer of appropriation to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $737,500, an increase in capital outlay of $250,000, an increase in transfers out of $4,600,000, and a decrease in contingency of $5,587,500.
I would move for approval of Budget Order 2022-04, Fair Improvement.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd also move for approval of Budget Order 2022-05, Software Reserve.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd also move for a budget approval, Budget Order 2022-06, Stimulus Reserve.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the other matters to come before the Board. We'll accept congratulations on the expediency with which we deal with that 19th item. If anybody wishes to extend it, apparently not.
Right at two minutes an item.
All right. Anything else from the Commissioners?
Riley found the noise and muted, by the way. Riley found the noise and muted the noise. No?
Well, luckily, he did it really recently.
He just, just now.
Oh.
Yeah.